Okay. My apologies for being late. This meeting is called at order. We have all three selectmen here. We have the fire chief, Paul Varga, and we have apparently Jeff Silversmith, planning and zoning. So, thank you. Let me just get to our agenda. Okay. Here from the public, do we have anybody from the public who'd like to speak?
Catherine, could you just switch your camera where we can see Roger?
No, I'm just gonna have you.
It's nice seeing you, but.
Is that what you're looking at, me? Okay, give me a second here so I can see what we've, which we're looking at.
I saw Roger wave.
I did.
He don't wanna see us anyway.
Let me, I just want, I wanna zoom in on them. There you go. Alright. And going back to our agenda. Here from the public? Anything from the public? Okay. First selectment briefing. Again, we're dealing with storms. That has not been much fun. We have pretty much, if I understand it correctly, we have received all of the budget requests from the departments. There's a little more work that Chris and I are doing on ours. And I have asked the treasurer to make sure she's able to produce a printed copy of everything on Friday. So that I can send it out to the selectmen to start looking at them. And then I'd like to schedule a special meeting for us to go through them and figure out who we want to have come speak with us. I will be trying to talk with each of the department heads that I can to get more insights into their areas of change. So, that is the general plan unless the few other selectmen would like to do it differently. And I'm thinking of a meeting, Saturday meeting to do it, to go through it. Does that work better or would we rather have an evening meeting or a morning during the week?
I have no problem with a Saturday morning meeting.
How about you? Not this Saturday. You'll be away? Okay, so, um, when, when do you think you could be available? We can, we can work that out after.
Yeah, I just got this Saturday and the following Saturday.
Okay, so we'll work that out. It might be one of those Tuesday meetings, Bill. Can you be available for that?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Also, I know that.
As long as I have a little, you know, advance notice to see if I have another appointment or commitment.
Not a problem. I'll make sure that you do. The, um, let me think of what else we have. A number of the annual reports have also been submitted for year twenty-two, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, I think it is. Oh, no, I'm sorry, twenty-two, twenty-three. And they were submitted to our, the treasurer to compile them. And they're not, I know that they're not all in there yet, but they're making good progress on that. One of the problems that we've encountered and you, Bill, you might have heard about it in the meeting that we just had on capital projects, is that because the audit is not complete, what's happened is it has a domino effect and it's, it's crossed over into the period, this really high-stress period of putting budgets together, especially for all of the people who are new, putting budgets together. So, we're having to help them with theirs and having to respond to requests from the auditors at this point in time. It just gets, kinda gets in the way of some other things. So, we're doing the best we can with that. The, trying to think of what else we have. There's not a lot much that's changed much since our last meeting other than those things. The next step that the roof, school roof committee is involved with or that they're working on, the architect is, is identifying a clerk of the works. So, they're putting together an RFP for that, and I don't know what is status is at this time. I will be checking. But I don't know at this point. And were there any other things? Not that I can think of. Did you have any questions about anything that's going on during this time, since we last met?
No, I just heard one of our trucks broke down today.
Yes, it had to be towed. Yes, and I cannot recall which one because it was Casey talking and speaking in passing as he was trying to get other work done.
Yeah, okay. Was, it wasn't an accident, it was a breakdown?
It was a breakdown. Not an accident, thank goodness.
Yes.
Anything else? Very good. The, and I know Bill was at the capital improvement committee meeting. For Roger, we went through, we did a preliminary perusal, if you will, through what's been submitted so far. And there were only eight things, eight items that were submitted. And we know that there are some outstanding from other, other people, including the school. They have to work with their board of ed to take what they had as a prioritized list for this coming year and determine which ones they really wanna pursue. And then they have to do the formal request like everybody else. One question I will have, I do have is how much is left in the unexpended, educational, unexpended fund? And what will happen with that? And, no. It impacts CNR because if we can't get the audit done, we can't get the money in to CNR. As it is, I'm not sure what the balance is in CNR right now.
Catherine?
Yes.
Just a couple of things. On the summary that you folks were going through with your capital improvement, could you ask Chris to put a copy of that summary and Roger in my box?
I sure, I sure will. Actually.
I did take notes, but I'm sure yours are much clearer.
Yeah, Chris, um, yeah, I put that together just so that I could keep track while they were talking and give a overview. So, I'll be glad to do that. And I'll also be putting out, we'll be putting out minutes for that meeting.
Yeah.
So, some of the discussion points and follow-ups will be on there.
Just a couple of things that kinda cross my mind in our discussions. I noticed in, in this year's budget, we had appropriated one hundred and twenty thousand for the generator.
Yep.
And as far as I know, we're not gonna have to spend any of that money because we got reimbursement from Kirma.
But the reimbursement didn't cover the whole hundred and twenty, right?
I believe it did. And, and it also covered the rental for the generator on the interim while we were waiting for the new one to come in.
Okay.
So, and, and the other thing, I noticed, and it was under last year's budget, but I believe it was carried over for the tank replacement. We had an amount of two hundred and seventy thousand.
What is the replacement? What, what replacement?
Oil tank replacement at the school.
Yes.
For two seventy. The last accounting that I saw, I did a rough breakdown. We had about a hundred thousand dollars left over that we were able to come in under budget.
Nice.
And the only thing with that, and I'd mentioned it to the board of finance last year, and I think also to you and Roger, if you remember right, from the non-lapsing fund and from capital improvements, we split, I think it was, we each put in thirty-five thousand.
Right.
Don't know if we did the figure, but I believe that's what it was. So, I would think discussion's gonna have to be made with the board of finance, how they're gonna address that. My suggestion would be that all of that surplus that we didn't spend go back into CNR. I'm just not sure how they feel about it or how the board of ed feels about it.
Yes, so, um, yes, I'm sure they'll make a decision about that.
So, I guess the good news is there's approximately two hundred thousand plus
Yeah.
money that we did not spend, that we appropriated.
Yeah, and all of that was straight money. It wasn't ARPA funds.
That's correct. It was CNR funds.
Yep, CNR. Thank you. That's good. Okay, acceptance of the regular, the minutes of the regular meetings of, let's see, twelve eighteen, two thousand twenty-three, and the special meetings of twelve twenty-seven and twelve eleven. So, let's start with the oldest one. Um, can I get a motion for those minutes?
Yeah, I'll make the motion for the twelve eighteen.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Special meetings of twelve twenty-seven and twelve eleven. Let's just go with, we'll go with twelve twenty-seven first.
I'll, I'll move that.
Okay, that's Roger.
I'll also second that.
Okay, Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
James, thank you. And then twelve eleven.
Was the eleventh the one I was?
I think so. I would have.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Bill. And I will second that. And you're pretty sure you weren't at that meeting, right? Alright, so, all in favor?
Yeah, just a comment, FYI, I, I believe, and I agree with your abstaining on it if you weren't there, but from, we, I had followed up last year with FYI. And I think on a small board such as ours, even if you weren't there, if you read the minutes and, and knew the background on it, you could participate in a vote. You don't have to.
Alright.
That wouldn't, yeah, I don't know that I would agree with that because it's one thing to read the minutes, it's another thing to have been there and actually heard what people were saying.
Well, and to be part of the motions and everything. I, I was a bit surprised to hear that myself, but I just pass it on because that's what I was advised.
Okay, thank you. So, in this particular case, Bill, you and I are saying yea.
Aye.
And he's abstaining. Thank you. Okay, and thank you. Alright, oh, you know, I did have something else in the first selectment briefing. Would you mind if I go back to that?
Of course not.
So, I had, we had put in approved fifty-dollar fee for use of the three-town buildings. And, and then a refundable cleaning fee. And the fifty-dollar fee, we'd stated that it would go to the Ashford Food Bank. I had someone come in on January second saying that they felt that they were being forced to donate to a church because a church runs the food bank. So, it was a point well taken. And so, I did some research. And what I recommend is that we instead have checks made out to the town of Ashford and go to Melissa in social services, who, she already has a process for accepting donations. And those donations can be made wherever is appropriate, and she tracks them very well. Then one of the other points that a person who'd come in to see me made was that the town wasn't really, wouldn't have been really tracking the money. We just would have been, you know, handing it over to the, to the food pantry without a real tracking of it, the way we would track anything else that we're doing financially. And that made sense as well. So, working with Melissa, I've already spoken with her about, you know, how this could be managed, and that was perfectly acceptable to her. She buys big Y cards. She helps, you know, she has a number of different programs. She knows quite a few of the people who are in need in the town. And if she wishes to donate over to the food pantry, she can do that as well. So, that's one thing. The other thing we found out is that there is a checking account that was for the food bank that has over eight hundred dollars in it, and it has not been accessed in a long time. So, we will need to decide what to do with those monies. Whether it's just to, you know, turn it over to the Ashford Food Bank or whatever. But apparently it was set up when Cheryl was here. And maybe it'd been set up for quite a while because there was no activity on it.
Chris, I, I assume Chris isn't with us tonight? I know she was, I think she's home because of the weather. But I believe she had explained to us when we were deliberating on this and, and changing the policy on the donation, because the way it's been in the past is that if somebody wanted to reserve note in the hall,
Yeah.
our request was that they put together a food package because I've carried many over to the church after that with assorted canned goods or non-perishables, and that we would bring it over there. And then I, I believe Chris advised the board that there was this account and that the checks should be made out to the town of Ashford. And then there would be a check written through the finance office to the food bank. I thought that was the process that we had talked about. These aren't donations going for church use in any way. It's strictly, the intent is anyway, to the food bank.
The one who was talking with me, she said, and you can't guarantee that because we don't manage the food bank. Not to, that was the argument. That's all.
Say that again.
The, the argument was, is because the town is that people would be, if people were writing out checks to the food bank, we're forcing them to donate to a church. That's bottom line. If, and in fact, if in fact this eight, over eight hundred dollar account was supposed to be used in that fashion, it was not because the money's still sitting in it. So.
It should have been, I mean, the rationale and why I brought this up initially
Yeah.
was it was pointed out to somebody that's been involved with the food bank for a number of years that while they appreciated the food we were having sent over, they could get much better bang for the dollar buying from food share. They said about three times the value.
Yeah, absolutely, and we agree with you. This is just that.
That was the rationale why we, while we, in deliberations with our board, we decided to go with the fifty-dollar, have a check made out to the town of Ashford.
Yeah.
And then we would forward those monies, I don't know on what, every monthly or quarterly, over to the food bank. So, they could purchase food through the.
So, what I'd like to do is I would like to work through the finer points of this, financial management of this money and come back to you with whatever option. The first option, and I did talk with Laura, with, bear with me.
Sherry.
With Sherry and with Melissa. So, the, the point, the point was that the money could go to the food bank, but we would have at least had it go through a process where we're monitoring it. Where before, what we were talking about was having the people just write the, the check out to the food bank.
Well, again, I think the motion was the check would be made out to the town of Ashford.
No.
And then the town of Ash would write a check. But yeah, if you could, if you could just follow up on that and then maybe get Roger.
The motion, the motion was not written in that way. What was written was that we would be charging a fee and the money would be donated to the food bank. And so, the person picked up on that and, and expressed a concern. And she really, we went back and forth quite a bit, but she really did bring up a good concern. I mean, a, a good point. And really, it had to do with making sure we managed that money appropriately. So, so I'd like to make sure I've got the process laid out, but I wanted to make sure that you, you both are aware of it. And that that came up on day two of the new year.
Interesting.
Another thing that has been discussed is also the, we have some groups in town who are on our list, our Ashford citizen list, as being able to put in ads for free. And, but some of these groups are holding events where they're bringing in vendors. And the vendors are not from town. And the, and in the past, maybe not too distant past, I'm, I've heard about it. What we would do is we would, well, for example, one group, I think it was the farmer's market, used to pool some money to give to the friends of the library when they hold their, their events where they have vendors come in. We also have the Ashford Arts Council that has vendors come in. And they have, you know, events that are for the purpose of those vendors making money. It's not, no, not just for meetings, okay? It's for those kinds of things. So, those are more of a, I almost wanna say more of a commercial venture. And that's something that I think we need to consider. So, I talked with town council, and recommendation was that if they're charging, if those events are charging for a table, you know, charging the vendors for a table, that they up the price of the table a bit and give the difference to the town. So, what I wanna do is I wanna have some conversations with the arts council and with the farmer's market and anyone else that's, those are the big ones, I think, were doing things to make money. So, and the money is not for the council itself, it's for the artists. And they're from all over. So, something to mull, mull over. And one other thing that came up in the conversation was that I was asked, well, can these be, can events be held for people that are from out of town, you know, someplace else? And I just said that these, the reservations need to be by the, an Ashford resident. It has to be an event for that resident. They're accountable. And no, we're not entertaining bringing in groups from outside of town. Because the groups outside of town don't pay the taxes on these buildings, on their upkeep. I hope that was an okay thing to say.
I, I don't have any problem with that. I mean, I think our whole intent with the citizen is to benefit local businesses and residents.
Yes. Yes.
I don't think we can afford to be doing that for all of our sister towns in the area.
No, and not only that, we cannot manage the upkeep if that was the case.
Well, it, it becomes an auditing nightmare if you start.
Yeah. Well, and we already have a schedule.
Tickets and whatever. You're opening Pandora's box there.
Yes, exactly. And, and one more part of this is I would like to have a contract run up that would cover all three buildings for the rental use of those buildings so that it's clearly understood as to what's required when someone is using the old, what's required when they're using the senior center, and what's required when they're using the old post office. So, everything's nice and clear. And the person who is arranging for the event, the, the local citizen, would be the person signing the contract. So, I think that one could be made up with sections in it that pertain to each of the buildings. What do you think of that?
Well, I think it's a good idea to have some sort of a use agreement. Probably have town, you know, draft something up if you'd like, and have town council review it just so there's an understanding where the responsibilities are. I don't, I don't see any harm in that.
No, I don't think, I think it would be a good idea. And it makes it clear, it makes it clear, and the word will travel that, hey, this is how things are done. So, that'll be good. Okay, thank you for letting me go back to that. Okay, moving on down to here from boards, commissions, committees. Do we have anybody that'd like to speak? Okay, moving on to old business. Ashford school roof replacement projects update. At this point in time, they're working on hiring the process for getting a clerk of the works. As you know, we've already, Chris and I have, and Jim Rupert, already met with our, some of our financial people. By the way, Bill, the, it wasn't for the financial people. I made it clear in the minutes from our meeting because during the meeting, during the meeting, we had some confusion over who attended these meetings. And I wanted to make sure that you were really clear and that I was clear as well. So, it wasn't, give me just a second here. I just need to pull the thing up. It was the meeting on twelve eleven was to discuss short-term and long-term financial aspects of the project. Attendees were Mark Chapman, the finance consultant from Munistat Services Incorporated, Glenn Rybacky, Finance Council, Pullman and Comley LLC. He's the replacement for the person we used to use for Finance Council. Jim Rupert from the School Roof Construction Committee, Sherry Soucy, Ashford Town Treasurer, Christina Abicoff from the Selectmen's Office, and, and myself from the Selectmen's Office. And we discussed short-term and long-term financial aspects of the project. So, it wasn't what's Duncan's group? I forgot. I think you had mentioned Duncan's group, Bill?
Um, you mean his firm?
Yeah, the firm. Thinking it was that firm. No, it was not. It was Pullman and Comley for Finance Council.
Right.
And we used to have a person named Judith or Judy.
Yeah, she retired.
Right. I think this is the person who's, who's taken over for her, him.
Yeah, I've spoken to him on the phone.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear for you. And going back to our agenda. Okay, so they're in the process of acquiring the clerk of the works. And in the meantime, there's not much else that has occurred over the last week or so, since we talked about.
So, the clerk of the works search committee, for lack of a better term, they will conduct interviews or accept applications?
Yes.
And then make a recommendation to the board of selectmen?
Yes, exactly. And actually, when we think about this, is it us that approves the hiring? Or is it the, or only, it's only because we're handling the finances and that's why we would approve it?
Well, it's a town building, and I believe the bonding is in both of our names, but I, my recollection, and I believe it was town council recommended through, who's the fellow with Duncan's outfit that's the bonding consultant also?
Okay.
Al, is it Al? But I believe they, that's why the first selectman had to sign the contracts and everything. But I believe they, that's why the first selectman had to sign the contracts and everything.
Yes.
So to answer your question, and I'm sorry to dance around it, I think we do the formal hiring.
That makes sense, I just wanted to.
Cause they're paid out of bond funds.
Yes. Okay, uh.
Although, now that I said that, I'm not sure they're paid out because I believe that's considered a uh, soft cost. And I believe we had Cindy check with the state board of ed.
Yeah.
And they said that they would not pay for the clerk of the works. Because it was a, a soft cost, we'll have to get clarification on that, Catherine.
All right. I'm just writing a note for myself.
I think we had several weeks ago, I think we had Cindy follow up on that. And that was what she had determined or been advised.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, Trump Co. House, Warrenville Post Office property. Engage the service of Richard Zulik to perform wetland delineation for preparation of a B one hundred A. So I'd really like us to pursue this, uh, as far as removing the oil tanks. At this point in time, there is no reason. For us to really have to go in and remove those. At this point, but what we should do is make sure that we have a clear wetland delineation. So that we have it for the B one hundred A.
I, I agree, but we had, and, and I think. Rick had, it's submitted something to us that said for an amount not to exceed a thousand dollars for his services.
That, that's for the delineation work, the wetland delineation, so that's Richard Zulik.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that at all, I think, I thought that was our general concept in our discussions about that. Those oil tanks, have we determined whether or not there's any oil or residue left in those tanks?
I, I thought that had been done while you were first selectman, so I will double check.
I asked Nutmeg to, to do, but never got a follow up from them on.
Ah, okay, well, we'll check.
So if they're empty and they're just. There's no risk of further contamination if there's any contamination there. Anyway, I don't have a problem, although I think it's a legitimate cost under capital expenditures. Um, but if there is oil on that, we have to do. One of two things or maybe both of them, we have to get the oil taken out of them.
Yes.
Or, and or, then we should have those removed.
Yes. I have a sneaky suspicion there's no oil in them.
I'm hoping you're right.
Yeah, I rapped on them when I was down there and I didn't hear anything, for what, that's, that was my method of checking.
Well, you took some soil samples too, didn't you?
Yes, I did. And uh, the, to me, it smelled oily, but only because it had been, I was down there. What I did was I have them in a, I probably still have them in a plastic container and I had my husband take, uh, smell them and he said he couldn't smell oil.
Okay.
So. That was somewhat comforting. All right, so can we add a motion here to engage Richard Zulus, Zulik to perform?
And, and what line item will we pay him out of for that?
Uh, I am not sure. Can we have, have the motion without the line item, we'll fill it in?
I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion. To authorize the hiring of Richard Zulik. To do the wetlands deli- to, we have some wetlands mapping already done. Chris has copies of it that we should share with him. He said that would be good, but to do whatever work is needed to do, including inland's delineations. And finalizing a, what's it, a B twelve or B?
Uh, so B one hundred A.
Yeah. And it does, the, the cost.
A thousand dollars, not to exceed a thousand.
The, the first selectman will be authorized to uh, review with the treasurer. Of what line item to pay those costs out of. Not to exceed a thousand dollars.
Yeah. The treasurer. Uh, second?
I'll second Bill's motion.
Thank you, any more discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, motion approved. Okay, new business economic development commission, look at how short this list has gotten now.
That's terrific.
I know, uh, we still are looking for people to fill these seats. And um, we also uh. Moving down to uh, item B under new business is set the date for the special town meeting to elect an alternate member. For the purpose of filling the vacancy. A vacancy on the board of finance for a term to expire at the next municipal election. So. When do we want to hold this meeting, I'm gonna turn away and look at my calendar here.
Well, again, we've got to put it out in the citizen, right?
If we put it, we can put it out in the citizen, well, today's the fifteenth. So I don't know.
How about if we do it the, the first Tuesday of uh, next month?
The first Tuesday of next month, so. And I don't know that it will be in the citizen because the citizen is getting finalized today, or it's getting finalized tomorrow, I don't know if there's room. But if we have to put an ad out in a newspaper. So the sixth, and we are.
I would, I would appeal to the editor to get, get this in, it'll save us six hundred dollars.
I shall appeal to her.
Appreciate your frugality, sir.
Yes, we will then. Uh, and should we not be able to do that? Um, it will go into the other one, but uh, okay, so we are setting a date. Uh, so who's gonna make the motion to set the date for the?
First Tuesday in February, I don't have a calendar in front of me.
Do we, uh, Bill, before you do that, did we have anything else that we had put on that special meeting agenda, on that uh, special town meeting?
On the last one, that's all we had on that we had to cancel.
Yeah, we didn't have any ARPA discussion or anything.
You said ARPA?
I, I don't think we had any.
Yeah, okay, so uh, we'll be using the same notice that we put out before, only changing the date. So Bill's making the motion, Bill, are you making the motion?
Yes, and that would be for the sixth.
Set a date.
And do we want to do our selectmen's meeting first? Or, or do the town meeting at six thirty and then go into our selectmen's meeting at seven?
Yeah, okay, six thirty. And that is on the sixth. And then we'll have our regular selectmen's meeting. Uh, is that a regular meeting we have then?
Yes. Oh, wait a minute.
No, that's on a Tuesday.
It will be the Monday, so let's, let's do it on the fifth, Monday, the fifth.
Okay, Monday, the fifth.
At six thirty.
Yeah, six thirty.
And then be followed by our regular selectmen's meeting at seven.
Okay. Um, do I have a second to that, Mark?
I'll certainly second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, unanimous, thank you. Okay, reappoint animal control officer Jennifer Miller to twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four.
So moved. So. I'm glad, I, I don't know if you've got any feedback, Catherine, but since.
I've worked with her. I've actually.
Since we hired her, I know I had got several comments about the professionalism and following up. Um, regarding the job she's doing, so I'm, it's, it's a pleasure to uh, renominate her.
Yeah, um, and bear with me, the phone is ringing, it's from the school, I'll call them back. They uh. Okay. All, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Unanimous, I've worked with her, she is terrific to work with, um, we actually got a cat for my mother-in-law. Through her.
Nice.
That was a stray and we'll be sending out pictures of the now filled in cat, cause it was really scrawny. So. All right, now, so I'm delighted, um, that she's gonna be working here. Reappoint the assistant animal control officer Christine Abicoff to twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four.
So moved. I will second that with many thanks.
Yes. All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, thank you. Uh, motion passes unanimously. All right, review request to alter transfer station hours. Was anything sent out to you?
No, well, not to me anyway.
I'll just, uh, we'll discuss it then and. Give me a second. So. The transfer station hours don't agree with the contract, that's one, one thing. Apparently, it had changed a while back and nobody's ever picked up on it. But uh, the way they're working is, right now, they have an hour before opening. And an hour after opening for uh, doing cleanup work, that kind of thing. The. Recommendation, well, let's just say that what's been asked for is to. Have them do cleanup and, and on, one of the days of the week, I think it was Sunday, when they're open till six. That, um, the last, it's really two hours.
They close at four on Su- on Sundays.
But the, but the guys have to be there till six and they have, they essentially have nothing to do. And so what had happened was, what used to be the four hours that would be done, worked on Monday. Got switched, so they're not working on Monday, they're actually putting the hour before, hour after. Or in the case of Sundays, two hours after. And what's when requested is to have half an hour before, half an hour after. Uh, and really, instead of having twenty hours of. Um, the, the. Transfer station being open to the public, it would actually increase it to twenty-four hours. And um, they would, and they, again, they're saying that they only need half an hour before and half an hour after. The one question that's been raised, and I think it might have been, um. Bill, well, one of you, I think, at one point, was how much will they be doing with. Heavy machinery while people are there, if in fact they, you know, don't have to. Uh, they're, if they're not doing it in the hour period before and after. And if I understand correctly, they're using, they, they use the loader and whatever. As people are bringing trash, actually, um, more the large stuff. And.
I, I had mentioned, I had mentioned to Joe Kalanowski when he was our, our director.
Yeah.
To minimize the amount that that loader was used up top, because I just foresaw a problem. Um, I'd go there and the loader'd be parked up top near the shed or somewhere else. Um, I don't know. And, and then we did do an agreement that we had Tony sign, Joe signed, and I signed. About specific use of that loader. Um, regarding speeds, regarding the level of the bucket when it's being operated. Or, or being moved. Um, Chris should have that for you and, and.
Thank you.
And, and her file. Um. Because I think it needs to be minimized, there, I don't see, when we have the general public up there, why we need to be. Unless it's an emergency, using heavy equipment around the general public.
I agree.
Particularly up top, down the bottom, you know, when they're compacting the, the, the uh. The bins and that, that's another story, but uh, particularly up top.
I, you know, I actually have no idea why they would be using it up top.
Well, I, it never was real clear to me either, Catherine, and that's why I had a problem. Typically, I'd go up there and it'd be sitting there and say, well, why is this sitting here? And I, I never did get a real straight answer.
Oh.
I believe I also mentioned Casey, but I, I know it was a sore point that I had brought up to Joe several times and I know. That kind of was among other things that led to this uh, operation agreement signed with Tony. Because he, he's the principal person that uses that there.
Well, whatever, um, whatever we decide on this, uh, I believe should be. Done as a change, an addendum or something to the contract. Because if, right now, they're literally not going by what the contract says.
Now, did you get something in writing from somebody on this, or?
I got, you know what, I got something sketched out and I didn't get anything formally in writing and I sketched it out a couple of times.
I'm wondering if you could just type a paragraph up for Roger and I and we'll take it up at our next meeting. I also think if we're talking about changing hours and everything, we ought to at least give it to the committee, uh, just for their input.
Yes. I think that's a great idea.
If it works out extending hours in some way and had no additional cost to us, I think that's terrific. I would really probably frown upon any cutting in the hours.
Yeah, so, so there's no cutting of their hours, what did happen, what, and I have it right in front of me here, so I'll just speak to it. Um, what they want to do is they want to change. Sunday, instead of ten to four, they'd like to have it open eight to four. That way, that's two more hours for the public. And, um. So that's two more there, eight to four.
That would be a workday that, that if they're a half hour before and a half hour later.
Yeah.
That would be nine hours that day, right?
Right. And so. I'm just looking at this, eight.
Will we have to pay them time and a half over eight hours?
Ooh, yeah.
Um, well, today. Bear with me, today, ten to four, eight to four. I don't know, let me go back, do the math, lay this out in a chart for you and for me. And confirm it with. Uh, Casey, in terms of, you know, what he thinks. What I wanted to do was at least bring it forth to you so you know that they're, um, they have asked, the, the people who work at the transfer station have asked for this.
Okay.
Okay, but when all is said and done, what it does, I'm just gonna get this right. They want, oh, yeah, they wanted it, today is two to four on Wednesdays, I'm sorry, two to eight. And they'd like to make it twelve to eight, so there's your. Extra couple of hours. And uh, again, and with all of these, it's half an hour before and half an hour after for cleanup, whatever. So, I thought what was uh, attractive is that the public would get twenty, four more hours of access.
Yep.
And so I will ask about, not only, but I'd ask about overtime and also put something together. That can be reviewed by the committee, the transfer station committee.
So it would be the Saturday hours then?
So what, Saturday hours would be, bear with me, eight to four.
That's what they are now.
Sunday would be eight to four and Wednesday would be tw- uh, twelve to eight. Because what happens is it also gets dark.
Didn't you say ten to eight?
So that would be twenty-four hours then?
Yes, it's twenty-four hours as opposed to the twenty they're working now.
Yeah, but each day involves a nine-hour day on.
Yeah, each of those.
Day on Sunday.
Yeah. So nine-hour days.
On another subject, but somewhat related to the transfer station. When is Hadley's probationary period up, is that something we have to review?
I don't think he's been there ninety.
I don't think he's been there ninety days, but the way time flies, who knows?
Did you get a re- did you get a response to your letter, Bill?
Um, would, remind me, which letter, Roger?
The letter uh, that you sent um, concerning uh, coverage at.
Oh, no, I, I didn't, I did not get it read.
No, you did not, but I would like to explain the coverage issue, they did not have coverage. They also, um, they simply did not have enough staff for coverage. So, uh, in addition, they have the situation where Hadley. Um, one of the workers uh, was entitled to holiday. Or whatever, and had to take it, either had to take it or pay him overtime and he want, he elected to take the holiday. So, um, so there, there's going to be gaps in coverage here and there. But that's just, that is a matter of staffing, not having all of the sta- you know, you just can't. Not having all of the sta- you know, you, you just can't get them all in one place at one time. And I think it, uh, that was one where I was aware. Uh, because, uh, Casey had said he was actually considering, uh, actually, he'd actually like Hadley to be doing. Some of the, uh, grounds work around there, uh, when it's not busy. And I see no problem with, in the cases of where he might be stepping out of the booth. That the other two workers should be looking at stickers. To see if there's, there's no reason they shouldn't be, that was part of their job to begin with.
Now, I understand that one of the staff up there is gonna be taking middle, uh, uh, medical leave, beginning the second week in February.
Yes.
For an extended, are we making any arrangements with that?
Uh, we have not made arrangements yet, so, um, that will be. Uh, addressed. So I've talked to Casey about that.
Okay. Cause I know there was another young man that Casey used on a temporary basis. That did a very, a good job up there and had no compunctions about working the booth.
Very good. Um, and, and not to say that Hadley does, Hadley does a fine job.
No, he doesn't find.
He's also been, I can tell you, it was, he was, I saw him at like six in the morning. Uh, during one of these storms, and then I was here at night, and as I was leaving, he and another worker were out here shoveling the sidewalks. In front of Milton, and that was about nine thirty. So, I mean, these, these are eager, eager worker, which is.
Nice young man.
Yes, and, um, does whatever he is asked to do.
Or with the public, I, I've got some feedback on it, uh.
Good report?
Good report, good report, nice friendly attitude.
Yes. Um, he did mention that we've had trucks coming in there. That it's a, it's like, a single truck will come in four or five times a day. With lo- with full loads. And I don't know how we're enfor- enforcing, like, permits, you know, having a, a building permit or whatever. If people are doing demolition.
I assume these trucks have per- uh, um, stickers?
Uh, no, yeah.
Because what, my understanding of the policy in the past, and I've asked them to enforce that, is that. If this is a contractor doing work in town, they have to show a copy of their work permit and the address that they're servicing. At the booth.
The trick is this, this is someone who has a sticker, so he's an Ash, the, people are, these are Ashford residents.
Okay.
Okay, and they're coming in with multiple loads. During the course of a day. And that, that was something that Hadley observed. So we don't take their license numbers, um, you know, over time, you get to know who it is. Uh, but he, he ma- made mention of it, and it kind of flies in the face of us trying to reduce tonnage.
Well, down, we only had twenty-seven hauls, uh, in the month of, of December.
Twenty-seven, you said, Roger?
Yeah, we had twenty-seven hauls, uh, we had twenty-nine hauls in October, November, we had, uh. Thirty-nine or something like that in last May.
Well, maybe, may, may, last May was coming out of COVID.
Yeah, yeah, so I was saying, it might have been, you know, and spring cleaning, you know?
Yes, it is spring cleaning.
Yep.
So, uh.
Couple of years ago, I, I, a couple of years ago, I had a complaint. Um, and I could never nail it down or get information on who it was, but they said there was a gentleman. That lived at one of the lakes, that was charging resident, he was a resident. And he was charging residents.
Oh, my.
To bring their garbage to the transfer station. I'm wondering if this is the same culprit, Catherine?
I don't know, um, I did. I asked Hadley to see, you know, see if he could identify the kind of. Materials that are being brought in, in other words, do they look like someone's dismantling a, a deck? Or something like that, or a house.
Yeah.
And, but he doesn't really have, because they've got a transfer station sticker, he doesn't have cause to stop them.
Well, there, there, there's a sign we had made up, and I, I, I know there's exceptions in most. Everybody that can see with these stickers that wave through, but there's a sign there that says everybody should stop at that booth. I know it's not needed, but there's certainly signs there to support that.
All right. Okay.
Roger, that's good if that trend continues, I, I.
Yeah.
It didn't, it's funny, when, um, we, uh, had a conversation with. The, uh. What's it called, of the, the, uh, company that those are hauling, yeah, Casella. And, uh. About, uh, you know, what, he was kind of, uh, he was a marketing guy, and it was kind of like, uh, this is what we're doing to change how we're. Doing things over at Casella. Uh, and I, I'll bring that up in our next meeting and go through it with you. But also, he was talking about, you know, increased costs, and what we needed to get was what the, um. Potential change in costs could be from the Nieroc group. Because they work with them. But they have a whole different way that they're going to be doing charging, and it's gonna be. Somewhat variable.
Now, I, I, I've heard from a couple of towns since they took over there, that we happen to have a contract. That we're locked in, I think, is it to the end of this year?
But, uh. The end of the fiscal, the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, these other towns did not have a contract, and they got hit with a thirty to forty percent increase.
Well.
In haul, in hauling fees.
Yeah, well, what, the, uh. We're still confirming what the potential increase could be, because we got, uh, differing numbers.
Just out of curiosity, because I was talking to somebody from Talon now, they're also in, um, they're, Nieroc is the entity that, uh. Hangs out at Wellington.
Yes.
Uh, for getting rid of hazardous waste and oils and what have you.
Yes.
Um, he had said that he pulled in there, and they took his point, but they wouldn't take his oil, wouldn't take any of the bat, none of that stuff. Because apparently there is some dispute or something going on.
Oh.
Really?
Yeah. But.
Well, one of the towns is pulling out of, uh, mid-Nieroc. So, that will also change our numbers. But I, I'll cover that, that'll be, um, we can add that to the agenda for our next meeting. Uh, so again, on this.
The other thing too, is to just make sure that, you know, the issue with a fellow coming in, I, I just want to make sure that we're utilizing our. Our dumb committee and making them aware of these issues as well.
Yes.
So.
Yes, that's a very good, very good point. We will definitely do that. Okay, the. Uh, I don't, we don't have any tax refunds that I, um, okay, so we reviewed the request to alter the transfer station hours. At least we've had an initial discussion about it, and, uh. We'll, we'll put that on the agenda again for next time as well, if that's okay with you.
Sounds good.
And, uh, no tax refunds, so. Uh, anything else for our agenda for the next meeting?
Catherine, um, are we gonna be discussing, I, I, maybe we're gonna do it when we discuss our budget? But any suggestions or discussions with our board about, um, recommendations to the capital improvement committee?
They haven't made recommendations yet.
I know, no, I'm talking about the board of selectmen's request to the capital committee for, for improve, for. Anything we may come up with.
Could you rephrase that? I'm sorry, I'm a little slow right now.
Um, I'm wondering if we're gonna have a discussion with our board.
Yeah.
About possible recommendations that we see as necessities for consideration of the capital improvement committee.
Uh, we can, we can do that. Uh, I guess, um. There's nothing, uh, there's nothing wrong with us making the recommendations, but the capital improvement committee. Um, is, let's see, we created that committee, so they're making their recommendations to us.
They report to us.
And then, um.
I know they're trying to crunch bottom lines and, and come up with, I mean, initially just estimates and then.
Yeah.
Try to needle it down, but I just didn't know if we were go- as a board, we were going to have discussions about. Other things that perhaps we'd like, may, maybe there are none, I, I could only think.
I have no, I have no problem with us having discussions about what's being proposed for capital improvements at all. And in fact, um, are you asking, would we have those discussions before they take their vote?
I would think so, before their next meeting, if we had, uh, well, one I have in mind is.
They won't be making their vote in the next meeting, it will take.
Right.
Two meetings of reviews, and then the third meeting, and this is how I think it will work. The third meeting will be to make a decision, and we have, what, roughly six weeks?
How about if on, for our next agenda, you just put, add, uh, board of selectmen discussions regarding. Potential capital improvement projects.
Okay. Okay. So we have transfer station hours. We have, um, we'll also have, um. This recommendation, th- this, uh, review or discussion, and also, the. I'll make sure that we, uh, in my selectmen's update, that I cover what was discussed or where we are with the Casella. Um, what they're talking about.
Good.
And, and how their process works. Also, we need to plan for a. Uh. Demo, a special meeting for the demo of the. Um, from the.
Website?
Yeah, for the website, yes, thank you. So I think that's, that should be its own special meeting, I don't know that we wanna. Tie up a regular meeting with that. So I will try, we'll try and get that scheduled. What we have asked is that they send out, that group send out some information ahead of time. I think that they wanted to do it, you know, like they do in some places where you, you know, you. You just show them everything and how it would work and talk, speak to the, you know, what the criteria was that was used. But I, I did suggest that if they were to produce something that would just give us high level. Um, you know, general criteria and, um. In looking at why they, you know, which companies did better, which ones they would, which one they would recommend. Uh, and then do a demo. Because a demo has to be from one of the companies they recommended.
Sounds good, probably a daytime meeting.
Yeah, I'm thinking daytime.
Yeah.
And we'll just coordinate with the two of you. Let's see, uh, do we have anything else?
Catherine, did you get my message Sunday? I, I left you a voicemail.
Uh, I talked to you on Sunday. What was the follow-up voicemail?
I got a call from a resident who's roommate went down to put their taxes in the box downstairs.
Yeah.
And when she opened the lid, there was a set of keys there. And he said she stuffed them kind of into the thing and got them into the box. But I have no idea what the keys were, who they belong to.
You know what, Bill? Someone who used the senior center or the. Or one of our meeting rooms. Got the key.
Okay.
And. I'll bet you anything, and I think they were told to put them in that box, because the box is a lockbox. So it sounds like they didn't get them all the way in, is that correct?
No, they were, they were sitting there on the lip, you know, when you open the lid, there's a lip there. But she, she was kind enough to squish them down into the box. I had no, they had no idea, and I had no idea what, uh, what keys they were talking about, but I just called you and left you a message to give you a heads up.
Oh, thank you, thank you, I'm sorry, I didn't get that, I knew we had talked earlier and I figured we were done talking. Um, okay, thank you very much for letting us know, because we, I guess we cannot count on people to. Exercise common sense and put them into something that is secure.
Well, I, I guess if she was told to put them in the box, she met that criteria, but it was. Left open for anybody to get them.
It is, as, as time goes on, I do find it is kind of amazing, um, how, uh. How some people interpret things, I've had my own issues trying to interpret, uh, getting my setup here. And, uh, I'm looking directly at what the person wrote, and they, they didn't mean what they, that what, what was re- what was there. You had to read between the lines, and I wasn't reading between the lines, because I didn't have a clue on what I was supposed to be doing, so, anyway.
None of us are perfect.
No, and I definitely am far from perfect, my husband says I'm perfect, that I'm right ninety percent of the time, and that's the problem. So, uh, can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I will second it, I got eight thirteen.
Thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night, folks, stay safe out there.
Get me out of the meeting here.